Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Rostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, December 6th, 2023, our regular scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you. We thank you for who you are. We thank you for your great love that you have for all of us here and everyone around the world. We pray for protection over every one of our military men and women that are serving here and around the world, and we continually lift up Israel before you. We pray for their protection, and we pray for peace in Israel. We pray for peace, love, and prosperity here in Hillsborough County, and we also continually want to mention the hostages that they were in Israel, Lord, that have been taken for their safe return, and we pray for those family members, Lord, for peace in their hearts, and we thank you in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. This is a rare meeting that we do not have any proclamations or accommodations. I think that's only happened once or twice in the last 20 years. So Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. We have two items that have been deferred to December 20th. The first one is Item A18. This is to approve the agreement between Hillsborough County and the Tampa Bay Wave Inc. The second item is A19, also deferred to December 20th. This is to approve an agreement between Hillsborough County and the University Area Community Development Corporation. We have several items for time certain. The first one is 10:00 AM, Item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing on December 6th to accept comments on the program year 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, known as the CAPR, to close the public comment period and review period and approve submittal of the CAPR to HUD. Item D2, also at 10:00, is to conduct a public hearing for the street lighting districts and adopt the resolution for annexation and modifications of the residential street lighting service areas to the Hillsborough County Consolidated Street Lighting Special Purpose District for the 2024 tax year. Item D3, also at 10 o'clock, is to conduct a public hearing to consider approval of the special assessment resolution and assessment role, which will allow the county to impose and collect a non-advalorem special assessment for the purpose of benefiting assessed properties through enhanced Medicaid payments for local services. Item G1 at 10:15, this is related to Item F1. This is to receive a report regarding term limits for B.O.C.C. boards and councils. Item F1 at 10:15 is related to Item G1. This is by Commissioner Myers. This is to amend the board policy for appointing and/or confirming nominations of citizens, agency government body representatives, or staff to B.O.C.C. boards, councils, committees, and authorities by adding associated language. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the changes. Sumo.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, and second, Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, now we'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. Now, the board welcomes comments from citizens on any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not made directly at staff or a commissioner, but rather directed at the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which their requests to speak have been received. When addressing the boards, please state your name, speak clearly in the microphone, and three minutes will be given for each speaker. The first three speakers are in person. That's David Coleman, followed by Bobby Ewing, and then Liz Gutierrez.
Good morning. My name is Dave Coleman. I'm here talking about the budget again because housing and transportation are top priorities. I looked up another city, Houston, with 2 million people in a $4 billion budget. They reduced homelessness by 60%. Our budget declares there is $182 million out of the $9 billion, which is $9,000 million for affordable housing, yet it's impossible to find it in your 450-page budget. A2 and A3 talk about 2 million, but not for affordable housing in any discernible way. This board needs to be transparent, which with the 7.9 million in communications and digital media, it should be capable of recording all public meetings and making them accessible, which you do not. THHI had a sleepover last week for school kids in solidarity with our 4,000 homeless registered kids. One of our board members was asked about hope and declared, well, they got 2 million, they could have gotten nothing. We need to do better. On the lack of equality, equity, and members individually supporting their own agendas, when you make proclamations and vote, you are affecting 1.5 million people. Three missing signatures on the September Pride proclamation, votes against enterprising Latinas in Hope, outbursts of cheers in this room against equity and nonprofits, co-opting our public library system, insulting our Hindu population during a proclamation, the permanent Christian prayer application now ending in Jesus' name. The silence of the board members when these things happen is deafening. I know we spend millions begging businesses to come to Tampa at the same time screaming against traffic. Why the need to specifically pay Israeli companies when it's already in the budget? My board needs to represent all citizens of Hillsborough. It needs to be transparent and fiscally responsible. Million-dollar flag funds for commissioners, pet projects to earn votes, has to stop. We need the same considerations for our Muslim community as we do any other. We can do better. We need to do better. In conclusion, there's a lot more coming before you regarding housing and transportation. It's time to rethink your regressive and stingy tactics and start representing the people of Hillsborough County. $9,000 million was from here to that ceiling. $182 million would be this much. That's what you say you put towards affordable housing, yet it's all mixed up in a whole jumble of all kinds of things, and it's not discernible. Please start making agenda items in lay terms. Start communicating to the public. You are, I can't say it enough, you're representing 1.5 million people, not a small constituency that you say got you here. More needs to be done. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next two speakers, Bobby Ewing and then Liz Gutierrez. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Bobby Ewing. I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm here to speak against Agenda Item A16. The state of Israel has been committing a genocide against the people of Palestine and has been doing this for the past 75 years since the Nakba in 1948, when they displaced 750,000 people. And the recent escalation of aggression against the people of Gaza and the West Bank is just a continuation of their decades-long policy of genocide and ethnic cleansing and colonial occupation. And this proposal to give $100,000 to Israeli tech companies is really just egregious, given that fact and also the fact that for the past month or so, there has been a mass movement of hundreds of thousands and possibly millions of people around the country to demand a ceasefire and an end to the siege on Gaza and an end to the apartheid. So, yeah, I urge you all to reject that because like this does not represent the people of Hillsborough or just the people in general. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Liz Gutierrez, followed by Iliana Centron and Lucy Stewart, that are both virtual. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I am Liz Gutierrez. I am the founder and CEO of Enterprising Latinas. I am, our organization is a beacon of economic empowerment for women in South Hillsborough County for nearly a decade now. As we approach our 10th year anniversary in 2024, I stand here before you to share a vision, one that transforms lives and uplifts our community. Imagine living in Hillsborough County where the living wage is $26 per hour, but the minimum wage is 12. There's a stark reality in the fact that it's just not a number. It's a barrier to basic necessities for many families, but at Enterprising Latinas, we see not just the challenges, but we also see opportunities. Our mantra is simple, yet powerful. When women thrive, communities flourish. We've turned this belief into action, empowering women to acquire and build essential workforce skills for both employment and entrepreneurship. Let me take you through a very brief journey of our impact. With the unwavering support of organizations and partners like the Allegheny Franciscan Ministries and many others, who've directed millions in investments into Wyomama and its surrounding areas, we've made, I think, quite an impact. And our achievements, you might ask? Well, over 500 families right now access a free Wi-Fi network that we built from scratch. A local restaurant that we purchased, sleepy little restaurant, we've converted that little building into a thriving community hub for education, entrepreneurship, and cultural celebrations. Consider, for example, Chef Nieves, a culinary wizard, who from our modest center runs a thriving pick-up-and-go food business, providing essential services and creating jobs in our community. This month, he joyfully hired his first employee. Then there's Marcella, whose delectable delights at Ellie's Cafe have been lauded by the Tampa Bay Times, and people like Carmen Galarsa, whose Carmen custom cakes add a dash of sweetness to our lives. These stories are just the beginning. With the resources, training, and support, countless individuals are carving their own pathway to prosperity. This isn't just about individual success, it's about elevating our collective quality of life. I extend a heartfelt thanks to the Office of Economic Development for their partnership in driving economic opportunities in our Hillsborough County. They, better than others, understand the critical need and the importance of skilled workforce when we talk about attracting companies and businesses to our area. As we look to the future, our partnership with you is more vital than ever. Your support, investments, are igniting our movement that we hope that you'll continue to be a part of. Thank you.
Next three speakers are all virtual. Iliana Centron, followed by Lucy Stewart and Natalia Orellano. Ms. Centron on the phone?
Yes.
Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Iliana, good morning. I am Iliana Centron, a constituent resident of Riverview and Deputy Director of Enterprising Latinas, nonprofit corporation with a proposed funding agreement presented today under Item D2 in the discussion items for our Economic Mobility Pathways Program that will offer mentoring, workforce, entrepreneurship training, and connections to community resources for low-to-moderate-income women from the South Shore region, leading to greater economic prosperity. I join our CEO, Liz Gutierrez, saying that we are dedicated to reducing key drivers of wage disparities for women, and with your support, Enterprising Latinas' bilingual and culturally sensitive services will provide support and training to low-to-moderate-income women in the South Shore region who are immensely talented but who face a number of barriers to increase their economic prosperity. On average, the women organization serves are majorities Hispanic, but not exclusively, with three to four dependents and with household incomes that are $25,000 lower than the county's area median income. They are also between 35 to 44 years old, looking to set their economic journey in a different direction for themselves and their families. They face several barriers to economic prosperity, from limited English to low educational attainment, little digital skills, and lack of connection or ability to navigate the areas, resources, and opportunities. We are proud of the work we have done in the last nine years to help hundreds of women create new opportunities, gain skills and certifications, hire paying jobs, and launch new businesses. We appreciate our continued partnership with Hillsborough County since 2019 to create economic opportunities and build community assets in Wyomama and the South Shore region, and we especially appreciate the Economic Development Department's investment in Enterprising Latinas and 12 other nonprofit organizations included in the consent agenda for today to assist in driving workforce and business development assistance efforts across the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Centron. Lucy Stewart?
Good morning, Commissioner. Again, Lucy Stewart did not check in.
Okay, thank you. Natalia Orellano, followed by Christian Neves and Liz Kennedy. Is Natalia on the phone?
Thank you to the board committee. Yes, good morning, ladies and gentlemen of all of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County. My name is Natalia Orellana, and I'm a business development coach and trainer from Enterprising Latina. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I sent you before to advocate for a crucial initiative that holds the potential to transform lives and uplift our community, the Enterprise in Latinas Economic Development and Workforce Program. As a business coach, I have been able to experience firsthand the help and support that our members receive from our organization, and today I will tell you the story of Liz Sanchez and Jose Sanchez, owners of El Cendero Verde, an organic farm located in Wyomama, Florida. In 2020, Liz is a stay-home mom, and Jose Sanchez, her dad, unfortunately lost his job due to COVID-19. And so, one day, while feeding the flock of 25 chickens, they decided to grow the farm and start the entrepreneurial journey, and they decided to come to our organization for capacitation and support. Liz and her dad started their journey in Enterprise in Latinas and have taken courses in food protection management, financial management, and business development to enhance their skills. Since then, the flock has grown from 25 chickens to 200 chickens and continues to grow, including produce and chicken meat. And thanks to our center, they are now members of the Greater South Shore Chamber of Commerce and hosted their first networking event. These opened doors to interviews with TV channels such as the Spectrum 9s and Telemundo. The interview was presented last week. As Liz and Jose, our organization, opened doors to small business owners that don't know how to start their business, but they are ready. At Enterprise in Latina, the Business Development Program not only receives the education they need for their business, but they also have the support with coaching one-on-one, loan opportunities, and networking programs. Furthermore, the workforce development aspect of this program is strategically aligned with the county's broader economic goals by equipping individuals with the skills they need today for the job market. Enterprise in Latinas contributes directly to the county's economic development agenda, a skill and empowered workforce, attracts business, stimulates innovation, and ultimately enhances our county's competitiveness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Christian Neves?
Yeah, I'm here. No?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yes, good morning.
Yes. My name is Christian, good morning, good morning, good sir. I'm Christian Neves. I am the proud opener of Chief Neves Catering. I'm speaking to you from my commercial kitchen inside Wyomama Opportunities Center, a hub for community opportunity of all kinds. I'm the business of bringing people's job to my doors and everyone's agree, delicious and loving food and multicultural food. My business was an idea and went onto the Enterprise in Latina helped me to transform my dream into a plan. Today, not only does my business serve good food in Wyomama, my business is creating jobs. I'm a job creator. I'm so proud of the many businesses that Enterprise in Latina supports. Your grant will ensure the continuation of the service to me and other job-related things. Your support for Enterprise in Latina, support for the people of Wyomama and for our small business with the engine of our local economy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Liz Kennedy, followed by Angela Troches.
This is Liz Kennedy. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I am a longtime resident of Hillsborough County. I am not a resident of Wyomama or South Shore, but I have been involved with Liz Gutierrez and Enterprise in Latina since it was a seed of an idea in Liz's mind, and it captured my fancy that someone really recognized that when women thrive, all boats rise, and her focus was to start working with women in the Wyomama area to make sure that they got the skills and the training and the opportunity to reach their potential and be economically stable and self-sufficient and independent, and she has changed the face of Wyomama and surrounding neighborhoods. But I want to also reassure you that everything she has done and Enterprise in Latinas has done, they have done more than they promised. They have not only used funds and support wisely, there is a multiplier effect. So I urge you to really approve as an affirmation of those energetic people in the Wyomama area who are making a difference and want to do more by approving the Economic Mobility Pathways Training Initiative. You will not regret it. These are fabulous people with the energy to make a huge difference in Hillsborough County, particularly in the South Shore area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Angela Troches?
Hello, Angela did not check in.
All right, thank you. Franklin Perez?
Yes, thank you. My name is Franklin Perez, and I live in Seminole County, Florida. I ask that you oppose Agenda Item A16. If you have made any pro-Israel revolutions in the past, I ask that you rescind them. Enough is enough. Israel is a Jewish supremacist, a part-time state that has been committing ethnic cleansing and human rights abuses against Palestinians for 75-plus years, as per reports from reputable human rights organizations like B'Tzalem, Human Rights Watch, and Amnesty International. Stop supporting Israel. Stop giving it money. Stop giving it weapons. And condemn it for what it is, an apartheid state. Gaza is an open-air concentration camp, as per reputable human rights organizations. The Israeli apartheid regime's Prime Minister, Benjamin Netanyahu, has invoked genocidal language against Palestinians in the Gaza concentration camp by referring to an ancient biblical passage in the Old Testament comparing Palestinians to Amalekites that must all be put to death, men, women, children, babies. The Israeli apartheid regime's Defense Minister, Yoav Galant, has dehumanized Palestinians by referring to Palestinians in the Gaza concentration camp as "human animals." Niko Pelad, Israeli Jew, son of a famous Israeli Jew general, ex-Zionist occupation forces enforcer and Palestinian rights activist, has stated that the Israeli army is the best terrorist group in the world. Ex-Israeli Jew Zionist occupation forces pilot, Yonatan Shapira, states that the Israeli army is a terrorist organization run by war criminals. At this point, due to scattered Zionist-only occupier settlements in the West Bank, the only fair solution to the Israel-Palestine conflict is a one-state solution where everyone, Jew and Palestinian, has equal rights. That's what is referred to as a free Palestine. All U.S. government entities should be pressuring the Israeli apartheid regime to move towards such a free Palestine. That includes the dismantling of the Gaza concentration camp. The refrain that Israel has the right to self-defense is a red herring. The real question is, does Israel have the right to use force to maintain an illegal occupation and apartheid state that commits that to cleansing and human rights abuses against Palestinians? The clear answer is no. Israel has no right of self-defense when it is the oppressor and occupier. I request that the Hillsborough County Commission not vote for Item A16, which proposes 100,000 additional U.S. dollars annually for the Florida Israel Business Accelerator. Supposedly, it's to create economic opportunities, but it's really used to fund Israeli apartheid, ethnic cleansing, and genocide against Palestinians. Our tax dollars should be funding public education, healthcare, and going back to our own communities, not to support unrelenting bombing in Gaza. No more money for Israel's crimes. You should instead introduce a revolution to stand with Palestinians around the world in demanding an end to the siege of Gaza, a permanent ceasefire, and an end to U.S. aid to Israel. Ceasefire now, ceasefire now, ceasefire now. Thank you.
Matthew Levine, followed by Court Hurdle.
Hi, my name is Matthew Levine. I'm a longtime resident of Hillsborough County. I'm a Jewish-American. I'm a member of Tampa DSA, and I agree with the previous caller that about all of Israel's crimes that they have committed, Israel is currently committing a genocide in Gaza. They've killed, prior to the temporary pause, they killed over 15,000 people and over 6,000 children. The only people that they're not killing are Hamas. So we seriously should not be sending them any additional money. We should be divesting from Israel, and I agree that this commission should pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire and no more weapons to Israel. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Court Hurdle, followed by Alessandra Momquist.
Good morning. My name is Court Hurdle. I work for Hillsborough Community College. I am speaking to oppose Agenda Item A16. Since October, I, along with the rest of the world, have watched as Israel has indiscriminately murdered thousands of people, carpet bombed and destroyed entire neighborhoods, targeted schools and hospitals, and denied the most basic humanitarian aid of food and water from reaching the Palestinian people. Israel's actions and genocidal intent is well documented and are part of a longer history of occupation violence against the people of Palestine that long precedes the events of October 7th. To call this expulsion and violent self-defense is either willful ignorance or a malicious lie. I'm here because I strongly oppose Agenda Item A16, the $100,000 in funding for the Florida Israel Business Accelerator. I do not support my tax dollars being used to fund these atrocities through partnerships with Israeli tech companies, especially when our public schools, libraries, healthcare, arts and culture organizations, housing, transportation, the list goes on, are so desperately underfunded. Moreover, I oppose the proclamation that was made at the November 15th meeting of this board stating that November 15th is Supporting the State of Israel Day, and urge that you rescind that. This board has blood on their hands through the support of Israel's war crimes, whether financially or through shows of solidarity, and as an American citizen, I have blood on mine too if I don't speak up. People all over the country, including right here in Hillsborough County, are showing mass support for a ceasefire, and you are not listening, and you are not representing us. Your constituents will remember the names of the people who voted to use our tax dollars to support the murder of innocents, especially when so many of us are struggling to meet our basic needs when it comes to election time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alessandra Momquist, followed by Albert Ninos.
Hello, this is Alessandra Momquist. I am calling to urge Hillsborough County to deny Agenda A16, to not send any more money to Israel. I believe that the United States has sent quite a bit of money already to Israel, and it seems that the people, both on it seems that the people both on the left and the right, I consider myself to be a conservative, a 26-year-old conservative woman, and it seems that people on my side of the family and leftists also agree that we have sent so much money to Israel when people here are struggling. You know, I've seen people on the Republican side say that they support Trump for keeping peace with other countries and support him for funding Americans more than international affairs. And on the Democratic side, I've heard people express sympathy for seeing people in other countries living in apartheid states and being discriminated against and oppressed. And I think that the people all across the United States and all across the world have spoken up against the United States' support for Israel, and I think that it would be unconstitutional for there to be any more aid to Israel, seeing as the people of America have spoken. And we have all been out here using our voices several times a week to show how much we don't support the United States' involvement. I'm a military brat. I have seen my whole life the United States' involvement in the Middle East. I have, my own parents have gone to the Middle East to fight in Iraq and Afghanistan, and it's heartbreaking to grow up knowing what America has done in those places. Also, I would like to point out that the United States and the U.S. have failed the people of Palestine for several decades. And I think it's the time where we listen to Palestinians and the people of Gaza instead of just sending money to Israel. I think that right now, while the world is putting a microscope on Netanyahu, claiming that he is a committer of war crimes, I think that the United States should hold off on support for Netanyahu until these allegations are looked into further, because I don't think that the United States on a world scale wants to be criticized for this, and I don't think that the people in this committee, in this committee or in the Congress want to be, you know, responsible for these crimes later on if the United States, I mean, if the entire world finds Netanyahu guilty of these really atrocious crimes. And, Angela, speaking from the heart now, I've been seeing these people die on the screen of my phone for, you know, over a month now, and it is absolutely heartbreaking.
Thank you, Ms. Momquist. Appreciate your comments. Albert Ninos, followed by Madison Gaia.
Yeah, my name is Albert Ninos. I was born and raised in Jerusalem, raised there 17 and a half years. So, yeah, I was a firsthand witness to Israel's apartheid. And I'm here to oppose Agenda A-16, Agenda Item A-16, and say no more funding for Israel's war crimes, crimes against humanity, ethnic cleansing, genocide, all that's been going on for 75 years since 1948. Israel was built on 600, I mean, in 1948, 600 Palestinian villages were destroyed by violent militias. Thousands of defenseless Palestinians were butchered, 750,000 Palestinians displaced. This is what Israel calls Independence Day. And of course, we've been funding this with billions of dollars for years, decades, and think enough is enough. We've heard other people say, I mean, I agree with everything else everyone else here has said. And, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't write a speech for this, but, yeah, I'm here to oppose Agenda Item A-16. Three files, then.
By Madison Gaia, followed by Ada Mackick.
Hi, I am wanting to speak against Resolution A-16. And I am a student of UCF, and I, like many other of my constituents and fellow American citizens, have been taking to the streets and taking to any mode that we can, speaking at town halls, speaking on social media about the atrocities that are happening in Palestine and against the people of Gaza and the West Bank. And for over a month now, we've been witnessing on every single social media outlet that is possible, the murder of children, men, women, innocent lives that are being lost. And for what? For nothing. And I am strongly against the $100,000 annual budget that is going to be sent to Israel for their war crimes. Enough is enough, and Palestine must be freed. The occupation must be ended, and there needs to be a call for liberation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaia. Ada Mackick, in person, followed by Yaya Shodri. Good morning.
Good morning. Respected commissioners and everyone here today, my name is Aida Machkic. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County, and I deeply value our diversity and our community here. I immigrated to this country as a war refugee from Bosnia and Herzegovina. There was a war in my country, not just a war, but a genocide that was committed against my people. My childhood was taken from me violently. My family members were murdered, or they were placed in concentration camps. And those of us that were able to somehow avoid torture and death, our lives were changed permanently in horrific ways. As an 11-year-old child, I asked myself repeatedly throughout my life why the world stood by and watched while my people were murdered, while everyone stood by and did nothing. Over 8,000 boys and men were slaughtered in Srebrenica, a U.N.-declared peace zone, and no one did nothing. This happened in the 90s, and currently, it's happening. My excuse was, people didn't know. They had no idea that this was happening, because if they did know, they would do something. Currently, we're living in a day of social media. We didn't have social media back then. We didn't have mass media. And now, almost 30 years later, we're witnessing genocide live, right before our eyes. We're seeing babies murdered. We're seeing whole lineages of families wiped off the face of the earth. We're seeing hospitals bombed. We're seeing schools bombed. We're seeing body parts of children right in front of our eyes. And I hear the opening prayer from Commissioner Cameron that says, "A prayer for Israel and the hostage, we should be included." And then, the ending is liberty and justice for all. Where are 7,000 children that were murdered in seven weeks in that prayer? That is 1,000 children a week? That is approximately 143 children every day. Where are those prayers? We didn't hear them. It has been seven weeks, again, seven weeks of closed borders and a pause, a pause that what? People can move to a designated safe zone that now is not designated safe zone? Everything has been closed off to Palestinians, to residents. They get no aid. They have nowhere to run. They have no safety. And we are sitting here discussing whether additional aid or supplemental funding should go to X, Y, Z. Where is our humanity? Where's every one of your humanity? You have seen your constituents, your residents, on the street for seven weeks asking for you to do something. Every single voice matters. Your voice matters. Your constituents are calling you. They're showing up. They're on the streets, asking you to do something. But we're seeing asymmetrical messages from you, even in your prayers. Does our life not equate? Is it not the same? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Yaya Shodri. How about Mohammed Akad? Omar El-Hari? Natalie Warren, virtual.
Natalie, do you hear us? She's not responding, Commissioner.
All right, well, I'll come back to her.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Hello?
Good morning.
Hi, I'm here. Good morning. Hi, my name is Natalie Casada Warren. I'm one of the business coaches and trainers at enterprising Latinas, and I'm calling to tell you a story. The story of a single woman, who, single mother, who saw potential in owning a construction company. And she came to enterprising Latinas seeking that assistance. And we gave it to her month over month. She took a training. She took our entrepreneurial training, and she's now the proud owner of PPA fencing company, which hires a staff of five. I'll tell you another story of another single mother who works a full-time job, by the way, but cannot make ends meet, and decided that owning a food truck and running a food truck on the weekends was the way to do it. She came to us, seeking assistance. We provided her with business consultation. We provide her with our commissary kitchen that she can use. And now she's one of the most recognized food trucks in the area, Sweetie Yamings. And so I'm telling you this story because I need the board to understand the importance of the work that we do at enterprising Latina. Okay? This is not just a community organization. There are real results here. Just these past two years, we've launched over 85, we've helped launch over 85 businesses, okay? And we've injected about $1.1 million have been invested by our business owners in the local economy. These are people who are hiring. These are people who are creating jobs in Hillsborough County. These are people who go home and can say, "I am a business owner," particularly women, who then help their communities rise along with them. These are women that their children, their daughters can see, "I'm doing something, right? I'm doing something that's having a positive impact." And it all started with a dream and support. Support that came from enterprising Latina. We have classes. We have trainings. We have business consultations for entrepreneurs. There is a huge benefit to our community. And the decision to reject an approved grant that would have been used last year to improve our center facilities, and the decision now to possibly not fund it again, is abhorrent. And so we need to reconsider how it is that we're using the money and instead think about the benefit that's going to be for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Last two speakers this morning, Hatem Faraz and Abdullah Jabir. Mr. Faraz here? No? Abdullah?
Good morning, sir. Good morning. Bismillah, Rahman, Rahim. In the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Abdullah Jabir. I proudly reside in Hillsborough and also serve as the CEO for CARE Florida, the Florida chapter of our nation's most prominent Muslim civil liberties organization, dedicating our services to the half a million Muslims, more than half a million Muslims that call Florida home. If you ask the black Muslims who built this nation in Hillsborough how they feel, the Latino Muslims, the white Muslims, the Asian Muslims, and the Palestinian Christians and Muslims, and additionally, the Muslims from 84 nationalities that call Hillsborough home, right now, how do they feel? They feel fear, and they feel they're being dehumanized. Women in hijab have been spat on. Death threats have been received by entire families and businesses. Students have, their freedom of speech has been violated. Youth have been assaulted by law enforcement. Muslim professionals have been targeted, fired, suspended, and put on probation for advocating for human, basic human decency. Hillsborough schools and universities are under investigation, yet we hear no word of concern from you. It is utterly disappointing that you have witnessed this so far, but yet unilateral statements have been made and the Muslim community has been completely abandoned. Not only that, not only words, but we are seeing actions and continue to see actions that are being taken by elected officials that not only endanger the Muslim Arab community, the Palestinian community, and the supporters of Palestinian liberation, but the Muslim, but also the children, the families, the businesses that thrive here, and they contribute to Hillsborough. I end with saying this. As a Muslim, I pray five times a day, and my prayer is not complete without praying for Abraham and the followers of Abraham, Moses, and the followers of Moses, and Jesus and the followers of Jesus. So when we see that there is a prayer that does not include Muslims and other Americans, it is of high concern. So we have to really transcend the divisions and embrace inclusivity in our words and in our actions, and to say that it has been disappointing that we have not seen that from you. I ask for your commitment to protect not only Muslim brothers and sisters, but our brothers and sisters from the Jewish community, Christian communities, and all other minorities as well. I hope that you will consider seriously making actions, taking actions, and making statements that serve all of your constituents, not the selected few. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second, Commissioner Wohlstall. Please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Bonnie, let me introduce the first item.
Yes, sir. We have a little bit of time before our first public hearing, so the first item will be Item B-1. This is to accept the ELAP Annual Report for 2023. Forrest Turberville is here to present this item.
Good morning, Forrest.
All right. Good morning. Forrest Turberville, Director, Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department. The item before you today is comprised of three requests related to the 2023 J&amp;K Platt ELAP Annual Report. The first request is that the board accept the report. The second request is to approve the ELAP sites and the parcels listed therein for both acquisition and protection. And finally, the third request is to authorize staff to pursue the acquisition and protection of the listed parcels and sites. The cost of the appraisals and other related research, as required by Florida statutes, can be accommodated utilizing existing funds. And as always, any proposed sales contracts over the coming year for acquisition of a listed ELAP site or parcel will be brought before the board for consideration, and of course, everything is subject to final board approval. This action today does not increase the budget for the ELAP program, and there are no associated capital costs or other operating expenses. All land acquisition and related capital costs will be addressed at the time a purchase contract is presented to the board for approval. And finally, in accordance with our ELAP policies and procedures, the annual report was approved by the Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Advisory Board on November 9th, 2023. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the annual report.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wohlstall.
Thank you. Mr. Turberville, as you know, I have a pending future item to understand how much of these funds have gone towards conservation easements that was allotted and allowed, I think, back in 2011 or '12. There was an amendment.
That's correct, sir.
Did you bring this out because you have those answers for me today?
I do have those answers for you, sir. In fact, I have been working on a report to provide to the board. It is nearly complete, but I can provide a quick summary today.
Yeah, if you can just briefly say how much of the $200 million has gone towards those programs.
Sure. So unfortunately, to date, over the past 10, 12 years, we have been unsuccessful in acquiring any conservation easements, in particular for agricultural purposes throughout the county. It's not for a lack of effort. We have tried on four separate occasions to acquire conservation easements from very large landowners throughout the county, multimillion-dollar deals. We have lost out to various companies and other buyers. TECO did acquire two of our proposed agricultural buffers back in the mid-2010s. We made excellent offers on both of those properties. One was 500 acres. The other, I think, was just under 500. And unfortunately, we were outbid on those by about three to one. So it's very difficult in this economic climate, real estate market, to be able to compete with something like that, especially with conservation easements, where you're talking about, you know, we pay 50 to 70 cents on the dollar for an easement. Again, we're not owning the property when we acquire an easement. We're simply acquiring the development rights. The owner or farmer, whatever the case may be, they're allowed to continue their operations in perpetuity. They simply can't develop the site.
When is the last time that we've actually approached a member of the agricultural community, even the assets that work directly with the county, on how we could further expand that program to make it more attractive to them?
So our last project was Two Rivers Ranch. We did work with Mr. Thomas, and he worked with us. It was a very good, very good negotiation process. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, this was back in 2019, we could not agree on price. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, this was back in 2019, we could not agree on price. We were, we were too far apart. And that was for approximately 7,000 acres.
And, and what did that property end up turning into?
It's currently still being farmed and is a ranch.
Do you have the answer for how much of the funds were utilized to go in toward the actual protection piece of ELAP that was granted in the ordinance?
Protection in terms of acquisition?
No, in terms of protection and maintaining the property. That's what the ordinance says that we're going to use the $200 million of revenue bonds for, from property taxes. That was part of my initial question a couple weeks ago.
Okay, so, okay, so you're looking for annual operating costs for the ELAP program?
Just how much of the $200 million in general goes towards actual, actually protecting the land after the acquisition?
Okay, so there's, there's two different components there. There's the annual operations of which zero of bond funds are allowed to go to that, right? So nothing related to bond funds goes to annual operating. In terms of when we acquire a site, we are allowed to spend some bond funds on initial fencing, initial fire lane installation, initial exotic plant control, and other activities that are related to improving the site immediately after acquisition. But thereafter, no bond funds are allowed to be used because it's considered annual operating costs.
But the voters were sold, I actually looked up the language, a referendum to tax themselves to acquire and protect. So then if this bond isn't what's doing the protecting, then what's funding it?
Well, the annual operating costs are being funded through the countywide general fund.
So they were told that if they taxed themselves more through that bond, it would fund ELAP, but it didn't. So instead of us telling them that, we incurred unexpected hits to their property taxes on top of what they approved of taxing themselves more. And that's what we did.
I, I guess that's one way you could characterize it. You know, I, I think in terms of other capital projects, whether it's roads, other facilities, parks and rec facilities, if you build something, you have to staff it. And you can't use bond funds for the daily operations and staffing of these facilities. So I, I don't know if that answers your question.
It sounds, it seems dishonest to voters. How much of the funds is remaining?
We have $33 million currently of bond funds, and once those are expended, approximately 12.2 million is remaining of ELAP authorization from the 2008 referendum.
So, so in total, so you still have remaining funds from the old referendum?
The current referendum.
And how much total, then how much total do you have remaining out of the 200 million?
Currently, 33 million for acquisition, okay? And once that's expended, that would be a total of 188 million out of the 200 million that has been expended. So there would be 12 million of authorization, which would be up to the board to approve moving forward.
Plus this 33.
Correct.
So how much are we, since we're coming to the sunset of the $200 million, what's the, what's the strategy for the, is the strategy for the remaining funds just acquire 100% of what's remaining and nothing's going to be left to protect? Is the, is the strategy that we're just 100% of the remaining funds is to acquire new lands?
It'll be a combination of fee simple acquisition as well as conservation easements.
So, and, and those are clearly listed in this 159-page document, that it's for conservation easements? That's the remaining funds?
It, it's not outlined in such a way as that we're going to spend the remaining dollars on conservation easements, but it allows us the option to spend any or all of that on conservation easements if that's the direction of the board.
So in 15 years, none of what the voters approved, I'm going to have to amend my initial ask then and understand the total additional unexpected impact to Hillsborough County's property taxes that were incurred from the approval of this, and at what point we realized we can't fund the protection aspect of environmental land acquisition and protection, and that we were going to have to incur additional funds on top of that, that the voters didn't approve or expect. And this is exactly where we have a death by a thousand cuts of getting behind on funding infrastructure in Hillsborough County. So I'm assuming, does this plan is somewhere in here? Now, to my understanding, the, the committee on the ninth didn't approve this, they just said that they need, they wanted it to be seen by us. You said that they approved it, but to my understanding, they didn't approve it, they sent it to us to review, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the term approval is they recommended that you approve it.
So, show me where in here, because I tried to find it. I tried to find where it said that we were going to utilize this fee simple and conservation. So you said you've been unsuccessful in doing it throughout the inception of the program 10 or 12 years ago. Where in this report does it say that the remaining $45 million or so is going to be utilized for fee simple and conservation easements? And if not, then I would say that we table this until a later date, trying to clearly understand what's going on with the remaining funds.
Okay, so if you're looking for less than fee acquisitions and agricultural buffers, that would be at the bottom of page 12. We have about a half a page that discusses that. We do also mention in the annual report that we have attempted on multiple occasions to acquire conservation easements through the program. Unfortunately, we've not been successful, hasn't been for lack of effort, simply been the economic reality that once a landowner hears that they're only going to get 50 to 70% of value, they, they realize that, well, maybe that's not the best thing for them, even though they can keep farming the property and utilize it, you know, in pretty much the same manner that they always have. So, I mean, I really need to stress that. I mean, it's, for 12 years, we've been looking for a way to accomplish this with large landowners. And I'll just set, be blunt about it, it's, it's no fault of staff or the county that that hasn't happened.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see what you're saying on the list of the remaining 55 million funds on the bottom of page 12. I've read all of that. I'm looking for the list of approved items that you're looking for the sunset of this project's funds, which is these remaining 55 million. So you're saying you're approving 33 now. I didn't see the direct chart that was clearly laid out of what properties you're pursuing, because you want us to approve to you to pursue the acquisition of these remaining lands. Where is just like the very clear, concise list of what that, what those properties are?
Okay, so the listing of sites, the summary of all ELAP sites is provided on page 16, and it goes further on to page 17, 18, and 19. Our sites are broken up into different categories, right? Special sites, essential sites, important sites, and they're, they're all there in terms of ranking. If you're asking for individual sites that we are going to acquire or we hope to acquire in the next 12 months, that list is not provided in this document. The reason why is the ELAP program is based on willing sellers. So we can't necessarily predict who's going to be a willing seller tomorrow, in a month, in six months. So that's why we provide you with the summary of the sites, because any of these sites could potentially be acquired through fee or less than fee over the next 12 months.
Okay.
And, sir, if I could...
I'm basically clear as mud at this point, and I don't feel like my, so you said that the remaining funds, though you said the words, the remaining funds were going to be used for things such as fee simple and conservation easements.
Correct.
So then you, you must know then...
We do. All right, we, we're going to hopefully have at least one conservation easement item coming to you in the spring of 2024.
So if we say yes to this simple report, you have to come back before any approval to expend the funds, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll move approval then.
Can we have a motion approved, Commissioner Wohlstall, and Commissioner Kemp? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'd just like to thank the ELAP staff for, and the parks, for the incredible job they do maintaining and preserving what is a jewel for Hillsborough County, what I believe 79% of the voters supported and have, and have experienced protection of those lands. In fact, acquisition of those lands in and of itself is protection of those lands. And I just, just to be clear, and I don't know if Ms. Beck can comment on this, or Ms. Wise, but when we put on a bonding item like we did, we're duty-bound to use it for acquisition as opposed to operations, because to use it for operations would be a, not a qualified use of it. That's the whole, you know, built into the bonding, correct? I mean, and maybe you have another way of expressing that, but I just appreciate that clarification.
So I'll speak from the bonding perspective, and Christine could add to the legal side. Bonds are used for capital purposes, and there's a lot of requirements as matching the term of the bonds with the asset that you are financing. And so it goes to this whole thing about average life and the match with that.
Yes, and I'll just generally concur. All of these transactions utilize specialized bond counsel, which guide what can and cannot be done with the bonded funds, and it's typically that they cannot be used for operating.
Thank you.
Let me make one comment before Commissioner Wohlstall closes here. Going to support the item, but I don't want to speak for Commissioner Wohlstall, but it appears to me that his concerns are valid with, regarding the additional general revenue dollars that are going to sustain the program, as well as essentially the voters being unaware that this was going to end up being part of the, part of the deal. He may use a different word, but I'll say unaware. And I, I think, I think those concerns are valid. So with that, Commissioner Wohlstall?
Yeah, I mean, that was exactly my point, is they don't know. And now it's a permanent, it's a permanent unexpected when what they voted on was a temporary quarter mil for what is a very good thing. So exactly, my words, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we have our motion, a second. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you.
Can we get a ten AM?
Yes, we can now go to our three public hearings. Our first one is item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing relating to the CAPR, a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Brenda Brackens with Affordable Housing is here to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brenda Brackens, and I am the interim Affordable Housing Director, and we're here to present item D1 in order to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the program year 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, known as the CAPR, and to close the public comment period that began on November 1, 2023, and to approve submittal of the CAPR to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD. This is a requirement of HUD, and the CAPR details the use of funds received for the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. The report accounts for all programs, infrastructure projects, public services, and other community development activities funded through these federal programs between October 1, 2022, and September 30, 2023. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, we had one person sign up virtually. Is there a Madeline Hernandez?
Morning, Chair. Madeline had been on the call earlier, but is no longer in the call.
Okay, thank you. Anyone like to speak to the item? If not, can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Wohlstall. If no comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Thank you. The next item is item D2. This is a public hearing as well, and this is relating to the street lighting districts. Josh Bellotti is here to present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department. This item is our annual public hearing to adopt the resolution for annexations and modifications to the residential street lighting districts as described in the agenda materials. This request is authorized by Ordinance 17-17, and these modifications have met all the requirements of the Hillsborough County Consolidated Street Lighting Special Purpose District. This public hearing was duly advertised in the Tampa Bay Times in accordance with Florida statutes. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and this is a public hearing.
All right, thanks, Josh. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Commissioner Wohlstall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bellotti, we have spent a lot of time back and forth on these special street lighting programs, and I think that I finally understand it. And it's, for a very, very, very small administrative fee, by law, we're just a pass-through, and we don't profiteer off of the street lighting programs at the county. We're just, they needed lights in the area, it was set up, and by law, we are the legal entity that it, the bill passes through, right? And we pass those fees back onto them.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. This doesn't have to do with this item, but it is something that I want to work on, and I talked to Mr. Bellotti about this. It's some, I, I knew that, I only know that it happens because I personally dealt with it when I was on the board of my HOA a decade ago. And I have confirmed this happens, and while I'm a free market kind of guy, since these programs do flow through us, the government, when the developers put in the light poles, TECO puts in the infrastructure for the light poles, and they put in the light poles. What happens is they bind these communities to 20-year-long lease agreements on the light poles themselves. The costs of those light poles are recouped very early on in the lease, and huge profiteering is then imposed on the communities with very little maintenance on these poles thereafter. It's egregious, and I don't know what I can do about it yet, but it's definitely something I'm going to be exploring for specifically the ones that we have to manage through the county. I don't want us managing something like that, that is exacting such a burden onto these communities, especially when they don't understand. I just went through one in Carrollwood where they were under, they had their bill more than doubled, I think, over a one-year period, and a lot of it has to do with these light poles, and their light poles are these concrete painted ones that were nothing less than dilapidated and deteriorated. All of the paint had basically chipped off, the mass majority of them, and they were still getting charged a full premium. So I don't know what can be done for, for the ones that we regulate, that's something I want to be looking into. But other than that, we don't really have anything to do with these special lighting districts, other than informing the communities that they themselves can take over at their CDD or HOA. CDD or HOA level. Is that correct, instead of us being a pass-through?
Yes, that is correct. In fact, that is one of the modifications in here today, is that one of the CDDs in Lake St. Charles is transferring these to become part of the county's Residential Street Lighting District.
So...
And those neighborhoods also have the ability to select the type of equipment from TECO as well, that may also help reduce those costs.
Help reduce their, perfect. And yeah, any type of education that we can do, even if it is the low 3% administrative, we, I agree, we have to recoup our personnel costs for the, and management of the program. But anything we can do to educate them to say, hey, you know, if you want to do this and start negotiating more with your power supplier, then we can empower them to do that. But I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Wolsel, second Commissioner Myers. Any other comments? Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thanks, Josh. D3?
Thank you. The final public hearing is Item D3. This is the approval of the Special Assessment Resolution and Assessment Rule for the Hospital Medicaid Payment Program. Gene Early is here to present this item. This is a public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Gene Early. I'm the Department Director for Healthcare Services. Agenda Item D3 is a motion that you conduct a public hearing to consider approval of a special assessment resolution and an assessment rule. The assessment resolution will allow the county to impose and collect a non-ad valorem assessment for the purposes of benefiting assessed properties through advanced Medicaid payments. If you approve it, the special assessment will only be imposed against property owned or leased by hospitals, and will be calculated at $26,600 per hospital bed, and will be collected by directly billing each hospital. The special assessment resolution is structured to ensure we include the county costs associated with the development, levy, administration, and collection of the assessments. This special assessment resolution has been publicly noticed in accordance with the law in Ordinance Number 23-20. And it's my understanding that we have some representatives from the healthcare system that have signed up for public comment. This is a public hearing.
And thank you. This is a public hearing. We've got four individuals that have signed up. There's a Carrie Eisenbys, virtual. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Yes, it's Carrie Eisenbys. Thank you. I'm the Chief of Staff at BAC here, and I'm proud to be...
I think we lost you.
Carrie, can you hear us? You cut out.
No, I can hear you, but we lost Ms. Eisenbys.
Ms. Eisenbys, are you able to hear me?
I'll take the other three speakers that are here, and then we'll circle back to you. There's Colleen Ernst, followed by Joe Johnson and Steve Harris.
Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Colleen Ernst, and I work with hospitals across the state of Florida, and many of the hospitals here in Hillsborough County. We serve as consultants and technical experts on this program. We're here today just to answer any questions that the board might have, or respond to any questions if the public did have those questions. But I would personally just like to thank the staff for their continued dedication to this effort. It's a wonderful program that ensures that quality care is available to all patients here in Hillsborough County, that hospitals are able to get the reimbursement to sustain these essential services. And of course, it is a special assessment on the hospitals only. No individual citizens, no other businesses face any kind of bill or financial obligation as a result of this program, but it does help reimbursement flow to the hospitals, and it does help them provide quality care. So, so thank you, thank you to Gene Early, Catherine Benson, Debbie DeWitt, and all the staff that have worked so hard administrator-wise. We're grateful for all of your time and support of this program.
Thank you, Ms. Ernst. Joe Johnson? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Hagan and honorable members of the Commission. I'm Joe Johnson, the President and CEO of Advent Health Carrollwood, and I'm here on behalf of Advent Health Carrollwood and Advent Health Tampa in support of this, this item that, the directed payment program, and what the rate resolution you're considering today. Private hospitals and healthcare systems in Hillsborough County provide vital healthcare services to our community. The program generates critically needed funds to support hospitals and enable continued positive economic impact in our region, and, as you heard, at no cost to our residents or businesses. This funding provides Advent Health the ability to meet the growing needs of our underserved community and to provide high-quality care to patients in Hillsborough County. And I just want to express my appreciation to your support to this continuation of this important program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate your comments. Steve Harris? Good morning, sir.
Morning. Steve Harris, Senior Vice President, Payor and Government Affairs at Tampa General Hospital. I can be brief today. I think I have spoke with likely each of you individually about the directed payment program in the past. And really, first and foremost, and just here on behalf of TGH, to express our thanks to the board for your continued support of the hospital directed payment program, and also our thanks to the staff that Colleen Ernst just mentioned with the county and their tireless work on this. Second, I just have, I have some numbers, and they're recent. I thought I would just pass them along. They're for year three of the directed payment program. We're in the statewide year three. These are Hillsborough County numbers, and this is the Medicaid shortfall numbers for the, for the hospitals in Hillsborough County. And I think it kind of accentuates why this program is so important. Those numbers for hospitals were $319 million. That's the Medicaid shortfall just in Hillsborough County for hospitals, not, not just acute care hospitals, but cancer care hospitals, long-term care hospitals, rehab hospitals, all combined. It's a huge number. That's why this program is so important to help, you know, mitigate that Medicaid shortfall. And thank you, Seagull, for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is Ms. Eisenbys back on the line?
I am. Sorry, I got cut off there, but I mainly got my points across. I want to thank the Commissioners again, and the staff, as everyone else has, on this effort. It's been, I feel, an effort, and as, we really do appreciate the enhanced payments that will help us do more.
All right, well, thank you for your comments. Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by, is that Commissioner Cohen? Second by Commissioner Wolsel. No comments? Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. Finally, we got two 1015s. I think we're gonna take up G1 first.
Yes, G1 first. And so, this is a to receive a report regarding term limits for BOCC boards and councils. Mary Helen Ferris from the County Attorney's Office will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mary Helen Ferris with the County Attorney's Office, and this will be brief. At the board meeting of October 18th, the board directed that we bring back a report listing those boards and councils created by the board, which is the focus of this endeavor, and a separate list of those that are created by the state. I provided that list. I want to thank Luanne Finley and Brandon Wagner and his team. They helped with this list, and that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments on the report? If not, can we have a motion to receive it? Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Owen. Please accord your vote.
Thank you.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Now, F1?
Thank you. And the companion item, Item F1, is Commissioner Myers' item regarding a policy regarding these boards and councils.
Commissioner Myers?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much, Mary Helen Ferris. Agenda Item F1 is very explanatory, so I would like to hear from the board before I make a motion, any comments.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I know we kind of discussed this a little bit in link last time, and, and I do see what you're doing here. I, I'm somebody that's for term limits all the way across the board, from school board all the way to President of the United States. My only concern was losing talent that we really desperately need on some of these boards, and replacing them with someone that possibly doesn't have the knowledge, hospital boards, things like that, that are very critical, that we've had people serving for a long time. I know I mentioned that I used a lot of my predecessors, Commissioner Whites, because they were doing a great job. So, my only, and I'll listen to other Commissioners and Commissioner Myers, because I see what you're doing, and I, I like what you're doing. My only probably request for me to get behind this was, you know, with legal terminology, statutes, and ordinances, the words, you know, shall and will, they mean a lot. And, and the, the last sentence basically states, "An applicant has served on that board or council and will give preference." To me, that's a pretty powerful word, that we're gonna make that absolute. And again, I'm not making any substitute motion. I'd like to hear from everybody, but I would get behind it if, if the word may or some word of suggestive matter was in there. So, that's just my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I actually agree completely with you. I would actually, I hadn't thought of replacing will with may, but I thought of maybe replacing the word preference with consideration. Either, either way, though, I think it's a little, it's not a mandate, it's a, it's a, then, you know, poses the question.
And Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, and I'll just say that I agree with the sentiments expressed by both of you. I also thought about consideration, and I appreciate what you're trying to do here, Commissioner Myers, and I think it's, it's good. At one point, I think while I was here, there was some, something put forward, like a policy that identified when people serving on commissions or councils didn't attend and had really poor attendance records, and that was brought to our attention, and that changed things a lot. So, including something like the number of terms or recognizing it in there, and, you know, giving an opportunity by saying it can be taken into consideration, I think, or may, either, either one of those, I think, are good modifications that, for me, that would make it a more, doing what we, we need to do.
Commissioner Wolsel?
I think one of the people have been on one of our boards for like 19 years, and that was, actually, that was last year when I first got here, so that's 20 years now. There's probably something that she's working on here. I mean, it's two decades. You want politicians to have term limits, you know? You have an NGO that can kind of be down in the weeds, and that could be problematic. As far as the attorney jargon and lingo, I agree, there's probably something there, but whatever we do, I mean, probably something needs to be done. I mean, there's, there's talent, and then there's meddling, and that's probably something that needs to be addressed. And some of these boards should have probably been, many of these boards, in my opinion, should have been, the chair is empowered, actually, in our policies to, to create things, and then when they're done, they've served their purpose, we end them. But they kind of have become permanent, right? I'm getting laughter, but, and then there's unintended consequences of staff having to fund them, publicly record them. There's a system of former aides kind of trickling down, and then they're involved in these boards, and then you get kind of this eternal lingering layover of bureaucracy that is created in these boards. So, I'm, I'm pretty much on board with whatever Commissioner Myers wants, right now with him, frankly, so, I yield.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Myers, what's your pleasure?
I'm gonna move that we have the term limits be for two consecutive terms. So, if they're serving four years, they get to serve eight years. So, that's a term limit I would like to see in place. Thank...
That's my motion.
That is my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, so, do you want to incorporate any of the other suggestions as far as consideration or may or...
Legal, whatever. Mary Helen, thank you.
Yes, you could do it either way. I, I think it seems like the direction of the board, if you put may give preference, you've got that in the policy, and it also includes that the, the Luanne Finley or her successor will put on the ballots, when you have to go to vote, how many terms they've served, so you've had that information. So, you might just want to change will to may, and then you'll have that information when you go to vote, and if you, you know, depending on the board and the applicants, the board can just make that decision at that point. Okay. Can we agree to that? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Commissioner Owen's last speaker.
Yeah, well, I guess it kind of doesn't make sense then, because if we're actually putting an actual term limit on, there, it is, it has become shall. So, so we can't say may and then say it is absolute that there's a term limit, correct?
Correct. I mean, the goal would be, generally speaking, if, and, correct me if I misunderstood, generally speaking, you want an applicant to be able to serve two terms, and then you may consider an additional term, depending on the applicant and the board, but that would be the board's decision.
Okay, so two terms in, and that we may consider...
Correct.
Commissioner Wolsel?
Okay. Yeah, does that, does that answer your question? I was gonna say, I do agree, like, on the hospital board, I mean, that's, don't we require them to have medical expertise on that board? So, I guess on the ones where it's like extremely limited, and it's not like a social type of board, I guess I'll frame it, that was created. Does that address your... Okay, okay.
Okay. Commissioner Myers, you good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Owen. No other comments? Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Kemp? Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Mary Helen.
Thank you. We can now go back to the regular agenda. Item B2, this is to approve an agreement between Hillsborough County and Enterprising Latinas. Ron Barton is here to present this item.
Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator. This item's B2. We ask for your approval of an agreement between Hillsborough County and Enterprising Latinas, Inc., in the not to exceed a total amount of $250,000 for provision of economic mobility pathways training for the period of October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2024, current fiscal year. By way of summary, to be honest with you, Liz and a number of her associates spoke in public comment. I think they adequately described very much what they are involved with, but I'm here to answer any questions, and I ask for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I've reviewed this contract in the exhibit, Mr. Barton. I guess the issue that I have, and I think that kind of drives voters crazy, is situations like this where we're kind of, looks like paying for services, is what it looks like. We are, we would be, in essence, putting money just into an operating account based on services that are provided, right? There's no capital improvement, and I'm just trying to quantify, and, and, first, second, I want to say that I really want to respect the flags of Commissioners, especially prior Commissioners on a prior board, because the voters voted people in to make these decisions, and I, I definitely want to respect that, but when I see a situation where I'm just seeing 8,003, I'm looking at Exhibit C, Mr. Barton, $8,337 a month for 12 months for management and administration and economic mobility pathway services, and then $150,000, that just looks like it's not broken down on how we came up with that number for workforce training and entrepreneurship. So, how does that work? Do they invoice us? Do we have staff that is there that monitors these services, how they're being implemented? I mean, how in the world is that quantified as far as value for the service? And, and how do we monitor with these not-for-profits that they're using for those particular services?
So, you're correct. There's two approaches that we take with most of these nonprofits, but sometimes we're towards one or the other. So, the first is the fee for services. That's what we call it. And so, that's where, I'm gonna use my words, we're investing in a partner, and we believe in their mission. We believe in the people that are executing within that organization, and so, it's an investment. And so it's an investment that we're making for their services in that community. In this case, the Wyomma area, but frankly, even broader than that, but South County. So that's the fee for services portion. And last year, that was $100,000 that we had in the '22 fiscal year.
And not to cut you off, how did we come up that that is the value for that service? How do we, how do we know that that is the correct value for that service?
So we get a, here's the sequence. There's a flagged item. We get an amount and we go sit down with the nonprofit. And we, we work out either, you know, a reporting mechanism for the fee for services, because they do report, all of them report, in each of the payment cycles. And they report on their activities. So we do have those. And then if there's a fee for performance, it's usually on a per-head basis or some, some form like that. So we're frankly given, it doesn't go the other way around. We don't do an RFP and say, we've got some money. What do you want to do for it? And then evaluate it. We're given a, we're given a funding amount. And we go establish the best thing we could do.
So we don't know the value for the service, correct?
Well, we effectively have established the value.
Okay. And how did we, again, I'm sorry to make you repeat yourself.
No, it's okay.
Are we comparing this with other services of other organizations? I mean, how, I just want to make sure these are taxpayer dollars that if I'm, if we're approving something that, what looks to me like we will just send into an operating account of a not-for-profit, that doesn't go to a capital improvement or nothing, that we can actually tag the value of that service for, that we have said, okay, this value for this service is used in another county for the same type of services? I mean, how are we exactly valuing? I guess that's, I know I keep coming back around to the same question, so.
Well, it's okay. And then, well, I want to make sure we distinguish between the two. So the $150,000 that was flagged for this current year, we did a performance-based contract. So it's, you know, I call it widgets. But, you know, it's based on per-head performance that's prescribed in our conversations with the nonprofit. The $100,000, which I think you're referring to mostly, is, yes, it's an investment in the operations of that entity. And that's pretty typical in our contracts. And so, you know, those, those values, we try to make consistent across the board with our other nonprofits. But, you know, they vary because the flag varies. So, you know, we do the best we can to try and get some commonality among those. And as I said, this isn't a check. And we said, good luck, we hope you do well. They give reporting in each cycle that we give them payment. And, and so they delineate their activities. And so there is, there is disclosure on their activities.
Well, and you said something that would actually help, and maybe I've missed it. You said amount of money per head. You'd said that.
So that's the, that's the $150,000 part of the contract. And that's a performance-based component to the contract. And it delineates in there the number based on moving through the programs. If you remember, Ms. Gutierrez talked about a sequence of training and activity that they do. We've mimicked that in the contract itself for the performance contract.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I'll listen to some other commissioners speak on this. But I, I'm just, and this is going to go for even future flags that come before me. If it's, if it's funds that I can't really quantify that are going for a particular capital improvement or something that I can quantify, I'm not going to, I'm not going to support it. You know, I would support continuing it because I definitely, certainly don't want to take funds that an organization's dependent on if they could, if this could go to a capital improvement or something that we can actually quantify. Because I hear you, Mr. Barton, how you're saying we quantify it. But to me, it's just not, it's just not adding up. So, so I won't be supporting it as is, but I would support some type of continuance. Thanks.
Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be relatively brief. And, you know, the fellow board members deserve to know that coincidentally, also, this same organization, when I was going through and I applaud the yes votes that I got, I'm putting forward my good policy for nonprofits, there were $600,000 of property taxes that set collecting dust devaluing under Bidenomics for six years on our budgets because of a commissioner flag to the same organization, just because an, and staff is absolved of anything to do with this money. This is a county commissioner issue that we have to work out. Six years, $600,000 of people's funds that are collecting dust devaluing because of inflation. That is something that is unacceptable. As far as it goes towards this specific item, since that $600,000 has been cured now, this is for workforce development, which I'm, I'm really wrapping my round, my head around. It's a pretty fungible term when it comes to people's money. Pretty fungible. The initial funds that were raised as concerns from the same organization in the previous years, where they self-reported that they received a lot of money and helped zero individuals, that was also for workforce development, correct?
That would have been what the contract was.
Okay. So under Florida state law, under chartered county, commissioners can be recalled for seven things. I know because I looked into recalling a commissioner several years ago. Misfeasance is when you accidentally do something that's harder to prove. Malfeasance, one of the other seven, is when you do something knowing it's a problem. And for this, we know that this organization has received taxpayers' funds and produced nothing in return for it. For me to say yes for them to get even more, I think would make me eligible for recall. So I will be saying no. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
I have to respectfully fundamentally disagree with the premise of what you just said. This organization has a stellar reputation in the community. And I have visited there a number of times and heard the testimony myself of the many people who have been affected positively by their efforts. I'm not an expert on their finances, you know. And, and as commissioners, there's an awful lot of organizations that we, that we support, where I can't sit here and tell you the, the details of everything they do to conduct themselves. But I just have to say that in my experience with this group, they have always been absolutely above board and beyond reproach. And I have never heard issues raised about any kind of malfeasance associated with them. And I think it's important to be clear about that. I, in what I have seen, they help lift people up and give them a chance in this world to create businesses, to create jobs, to create economic opportunity in an area of the county where there isn't a lot or there hasn't in the past been. There's, there's certainly a lot more now than there was. And I think that if anything, Enterprising Latinas has been a part of that upward trajectory. And I was hoping that we would continue to, to see it that way.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cohen, I support everything you said. And I'd just like to add that the nonprofit organization is not going to receive any funds from the county unless they meet the scope of services that we have in the contract. Am I correct, Mr. Barton?
Yes, ma'am.
So that, I mean, that's the key. So in order for them to receive the $250,000, they're going to have to meet the scope of services. And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Commissioner Wostel?
No one, you can, I mean, you could disagree all you want, but they self-reported with notarized signatures from their own organization that they expended a lot of people's property taxes and helped no one. And then they gave the reasoning is that they couldn't identify eligible applicants to their program that are economically disadvantaged in Wyomma. So I don't know what you're disagreeing about. Those were factual documents that are reported. They are official public records, irrefutable in Hillsborough County government. So I don't, I'm not sure exactly. No one's saying that they did anything malfeasant. They were given money. They had an opportunity to perform with their taxpayers' money. They didn't. I'm saying that, in my opinion, that with that known and irrefutable knowledge that, that this organization has a history of receiving people's property taxes and not producing on top of it, that we would be guilty of malfeasance and eligible for recall or removal from office. Under Flor-, I mean, you could roll your eyes, Commissioner Cohen, but, but there's a Florida state statute that clearly defines the seven reasons that a Hillsborough County commissioner can be recalled. So those are just factual legal things that I'm dealing with today. And for that reason, I'm a no. You can disagree all you want. And then I will make sure that I have my aides forward on those legal documents to you that substantiate everything that I just said.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my comments, Commissioner Cohen, you know, the comment that a lot of times we can't tell the details, I think that's what we as a board need to change. We need to change that concept of when we are directing taxpayer dollars, whether it be flagging or anything, that we, as county commissioners, understand the details. That, I think that is a very critical component. Not to mention, I think this is Exhibit A of putting our staff in a difficult position. Because what we do is, from what I've seen, is, I've only been a part of the flag process one time. My flags went to capital improvements that are very transparent, easy to see. But for me, what it looks like to me is a situation like this, we put our staff and the gentleman that's standing right before us right now in a situation where, and I don't need a comment on this, but this is just my comment, that they have to somehow comprise a contract without really any guidance on what the, either the flag item or the funding source, what these funds were supposed to be used for. That's completely unfair to staff. And I think this is actual Exhibit A on putting our staff in a difficult position. Because, you know, we as commissioners, when we are flagging money or approving budgets, we need to clearly understand the detail, not just of hundreds of thousands of millions, but every single tax dollar that is going to a source. So again, I'm not commenting on the organization. My issues with this are, are the scope of services that, as Commissioner Myers alluded to, I just don't think we value that appropriately. I don't know if we can. I just really don't know if we can. So that is why, you know, the only thing I would entertain at this time would be a continuance to allow the organization to work with staff to come up with some type of quantifiable item service, capital improvement, that our staff can appropriately produce a contract. Because I do not want this contract being used in the future for other type of flag items. This is just, to me, this is just unacceptable to the taxpayers of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I'll just say that we had a $931,000 totally verified cost for capital costs that was vetted by HUD and vetted by the county staff for capital improvements that somehow didn't meet that test, just for this organization. The only one that, that was treated that way, which makes me really question things. But it's very typical in terms of when, the way that these are overseen, as Commissioner Myers has said, scope of services. So they have like a unit of service. I mean, we do this with probably hundreds of nonprofits. I don't know how many in the county. The Crisis Center, which we just did, it's probably, I'm imagining reimbursed the same way. Because I was not actually employed, but on the board of a not-for-profit, that that's exactly what we did, number of days in a social service program that assisted people in changing their, their lives. It was a residential program. But what the county did with those contracts and what they still do with all kinds of contracts was reimburse per day, per service. So that is exactly what is being done here, correct? I mean, you know, and, and that is pretty standard. I mean, we do that also. Don't we do it for career source, exactly that?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, thank you. And the, I mean, this is a program that has done stellar work. And they couldn't have gotten paid for turning in something that said zero, right? They have to prove that they did it. So they wouldn't have gotten any money if they turned in something that said they gave zero services. We don't just give them money. I don't want anyone to think that in this county.
Yes, ma'am. Not to enter the fray too much on it, but Commissioner Wostel's reference was really for a CDBG contract, not for this contract. So I just want to clarify that for the record.
Right. Well, I just, this, I'm very proud of the work that we done, that we do. And I'm very, I just, as Commissioner Cohen said, I've been down there, I've been taken by how strong and good their services are. We have, you know, in their report, 238 documented cases that we have reported here, 500 families helped. And they do incredible, tremendous work in this very, you know, needy community. So this is important work. And I would hope that everyone here would support the continuation of this excellent organization with the great services they give and understand that this is something we do all the time with not just flags, but just our regular services that we have and fund here.
All right, I'm going to make a couple of comments and then I think we can see, board members can count votes. So hopefully, we can bring this one for a landing then. Ron, Commissioner Kemp alluded to this, but this fee for services structure or contract is not unique to this organization, right?
No, it's standard procedure for a lot of our contracts.
Okay. And we're not just giving money and saying, good luck. They are required to, to provide reports on their performance. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
I know we've had a difference of opinion, some board members on flagged items from previous boards. And candidly, I can make the argument for both sides, to be quite honest. I've tended to support previous flags from, from previous boards. So I'm going to support this today. But I want to say I am completely open, moving forward, to changing this amount, to adding additional, requiring additional deliverables or any changes that I think Commissioner Owen is referencing. And should this come in front of us again next year, I will give that strong consideration, as well as the issues that, that Commissioner Wostel identified. But for the purposes of this, I am going to support it today. Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, and then hopefully, we can vote. Commissioner Myers?
Move for approval.
Okay, a motion approved. Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Cohen and Kemp. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes. Just wanted to say that it's my understanding from the briefing that this is a combination of two commissioners' flag items. And this should have been, I don't believe that should have been put together. It should have been simple with Commissioner Kemp. This was her flag item. And if that's what she chose to have, you know, that's, that's her flag item. However, the other commissioner involved is a commissioner that has not been here for over one year. And I was told during the briefing that it, it's taken. Why it's taken over one year is because they've been trying to come up with something that this could be approved by and, and used for. And if it takes a year to come up with something that an organization, you know, they've been around for quite a while and they still could not come up with something to do that could be approved, I just don't, I don't agree with that part. It should not have been put together. It should have been simple. This is, this is Commissioner Kemp's item. Her side, okay, I agree, that's her flag item, that's it. But putting another commissioner's item in there, and I don't agree with that part at all.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. No other comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and Wostel voted no.
Okay. Bonnie?
Thank you. We have the next section, Eric Commissioner Owens' items. The first one is Item F2 regarding rescinding the policy relating to affordable housing relief from mobility fees.
And I just want to say, before I hand it over to Commissioner Owen, I think this is the first that we've had commissioned with four items.
I'm sorry. It's the end of the year. It's the end of the year.
So I think we're setting new records here, but.
Yep. Commissioner Owen? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'll say F2 and F3 are kind of related. Well, I'll say F2 and F3 are kind of related, so we had to break them up into two. So the first one deals with our policy, the second with actual amendment to the ordinance. So as it pertains to this, I know that commissioners have probably had a time to look at the backups here, and this is probably one that's just fallen through the cracks. I've watched the prior boards discuss the raising of impact fees onto the development community, which has been crystal clear that we're not raising fees on consumers, that this has to do with raising impact fees on developers. And as you can see from the backups, these fees actually come from the unincorporated general fund, which I was really shocked to see. And we are not at a time where we should be giving development community breaks on impact fees and mobility fees. So I won't labor it too long, but what I'll say is, like I said before, is that I know that this has been labored over by previous boards as they raised impact fees on the development community, that clearly this is not raising any fees on the consumer. So we should treat all developers as the same. And some may say it's not a lot of money, but if you look at each year, you'll see that fee continues to go up, up, up. It's up at 600,000, if I'm not mistaken, last year. And I would expect it to go up even more as we see affordable housing increase. So these are funds that us, as a county, need to collect from developers, and that is why, and again, this is not actually, we're not voting on the actual, to rescind it yet. This is directing the appropriate staff in the county attorney's office to bring back an agenda item rescinding the BOCC policy as to .304, .01, .07 relating to the affordable housing relief from mobility fees. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, Commissioner Owen, I just want to say that I don't know whether or not I'm ultimately going to support this. But regardless of that, I think it's a really appropriate conversation to have, a good conversation to have, and it's very important that we understand exactly what it is we're doing.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Owen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Wostel. If no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
F3. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is related, but not the same. This would have to do with amending the actual ordinance if we rescind that portion of the policy, because obviously there's a lot of stuff in the ordinance that we would want to keep. So just to make it simple, we're directing the county attorney's office to prepare an amendment to the consolidated impact assessment program ordinance to remove any sections relating to affordable housing relief from impact fees, and to bring back an agenda item for the board approval, scheduling a public hearing on that amendment. Again, we're not voting ultimately for the final decision, but for this to be brought back to the board as an agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, this is being brought back, though, with direction, even if we decide that there would, after learning what this is, that, after exploring it or getting back a report, that we would already have decided to remove these sections, which I, you know, I can't support without more knowledge or understanding of what this is doing or the scope of the program. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supporting that. I think it's really important that we really think about how we can increase access to housing that is affordable. And when we're talking about this, we're talking about middle-class people, the working people of this county who can't afford housing. And we have to do, I mean, we have a lot of housing that's out there, but not as much affordable housing. And it's really significant, and this is one of the ways that we can incentivize and, you know, we're even working and had a lot of discussion about doing it at 120% of the average median income. So we're not even talking about providing housing for people with average incomes. We're talking about, at some point, 120%, we've been talking about, because our housing has become, our housing stock has become so unaffordable to so many people that work our essential jobs and, you know, have children and families, and they can't, you know, access housing, which we need people that are doing this work in our community. They need to be part of it. So I would, I'm okay with having it reported back and trying to look at this, but at this time, I wouldn't be supporting just moving forward with a proposed ordinance that absolutely removes this source of, this way to incentivize housing that is affordable in our community. And I'll just say, too, when I asked how much this entailed, because what we haven't heard this morning is that what happens when, we don't just not have the impact fees paid, because we need them for infrastructure. So they are paid by the county so that we can have them appropriately, we can have infrastructure that continues to be built, which is what we say we all want. And in five years, the, this incentive has been less than $2 million in support for affordable housing. That's it, in five whole years. And I think it's an important program. So I wouldn't want to just rush into a proposed ordinance that struck all this, and we don't really know the impacts or scope. We have very little information on this at this time.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I kind of really don't follow what you said there, because this has nothing to do with any impact on the middle class or lower income. Again, these prior boards were crystal clear on raising impact fees has nothing to do with the consumer, but everything to do with the developer. So to me, that is extremely contradictory. And I can tell you, Commissioner Kemp, middle class move in the RP2 and the WVR2, lots of middle class there. But we raised impact fees on the developers that developed those properties. So to me, that argument just doesn't sail with me. And as the item is written, you will be able to vote no on it ultimately when it comes back. So to me, that just doesn't make sense, and it's completely inconsistent with this prior board's logic on raising impact fees. So to me, this is not, has nothing to do with the consumer, has nothing to do with the middle class, has nothing to do with the lower class. This has to do with developers paying their fair share to the county, and these funds not coming, again, from the unincorporated general fund. Thank you.
Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm disappointed that we're not rescinding these policies today, but I understand you want to do more fact-finding. And Commissioner Kemp said that she wanted more information, so I'd like to give some of the highlights to the general public. I heard her cries about, oh, the children. But in reality, this policy, it turns out, has been in place, I think, since 1992 or six. I think we landed on 1992. So what you really have here is kind of what, I like, we had a member of the Socialist Party here speaking earlier, and this is kind of that quiet socialism that's been here since 1992, where you have Hillsborough County, at least since then, the most dense senior citizen population in the state of Florida, and you've been quietly subsidizing their property taxes, folks that are living paycheck to paycheck, to pay for other people's impacts. And then now, in the past four years, they actually took more of their property taxes to pay for the building of other people's homes, while they themselves are struggling to keep up on their fixed incomes to stay in their own homes. Then you get the developers in here from Blue Sky Communities President clapping themselves on the back about how much good they do in that they're building senior living, and that's because you've had decades of policies bending their knee to need that same living. That is absolutely what has happened. It's irrefutable, and it must go away. Thank you.
Okay, so we got a motion approved. Commissioner Owen, a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Wostel. And I'm just going to say, I'm going to support it. Again, we still have to schedule a public hearing. We can always, you know, oppose it at that time. And I want to point out, there used to be a time, many, many years ago, where we had impact fee-free zones. So I want to point that out as well. So with that, please accord your vote.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Kemp voted no.
Okay. F4. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it's not Groundhog Day with us, everybody. We're back at the, to the vaping ordinance. And what's happened, if just legislatively, just in case the commissioners don't know, we had Senate Bill 250 that highly restricted our ability to go through the land development code to make this restriction. And so we've had to table this and put it on hold. So I know that my commissioners, fellow commissioners here have been very supportive of this, so I won't belabor it. But what this is doing is it is putting that moratorium back on so that our staff can do the due diligence that they need to do to get this in place. So it will put a 180-day moratorium, and this only has to do with retail shops that are 20% more vape. So it won't affect any convenience stores or anything like that in your districts. But this is, I think, very critical and important, and would appreciate my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Owen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Wostel and Cameron Cepeda. If no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, Commissioner Owen, F5.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this, I know commissioners probably had an opportunity to take a look at the backups and see what this request is about. And again, this is exploratory. It is for us to look at an ordinance and for them to make recommendations for our investment in Israel bonds, just another way to kind of diversify the portfolio. And I think at this critical moment in our history that it's time for us, that we should focus on this type of investment in bonds. But again, this would just basically diversify the portfolio, and I think something very important for the board to bring back to us. So move for approval of F5.
Second.
So we got a motion by Commissioner Owen, second by Commissioner Wostel. Again, this, my understanding, this is just changes our policy to permit this to being an option, right? Okay, if no comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Okay. Bonnie?
We're just on future discussion items.
Any future issues, board members? Going once, going twice? If not, all right, we're adjourned.